Council meeting, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance may be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have any of the public that would like to step forward and make any comments? Seeing none, move on. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of the minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, consideration of proposed zoning ordinance amendment Z 21-18, notification regarding next work session, consideration of scheduling a public hearing for establishing a commercial rehabilitation district, Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Are there any council members that want to take an item off for discussion? No, see any, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Heather, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. To business, consideration of collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers' Association of Michigan. A tentative agreement for a new three-year Police Officers' Association of Michigan contract was reached. The Manistee Police Officers, represented by Police Officers' Association of Michigan, ratified the tentative agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers' Association of Michigan and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement and make the way and step increases retroactive to July 1st, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, will you take the roll call?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorization entering into a clinical agreement with Munson Medical Center, Regional EMS Education. The Manistee Fire Department would collaborate with Munson Medical Center Regional EMS Education to provide a clinical site for students to obtain required assessment time on an ambulance. This agreement would allow students in the paramedic program to assess points under the supervision of a city fire paramedic to meet program-required benchmarks in order to obtain state and national licensing. At this time, council could take action to authorize the City of Manistee Fire Department entering into a clinical agreement with Munson Medical Center Regional EMS Education.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question for clarification. Chief, just for declaring by that students that come into the program are bringing their own insurance with the program that they're in, so then them to find themselves to continue with taking the micro, correct?
That is correct. Same program that we did a few years back with EM. Okay.
Chief, what do you consider the benefit to the city of Manistee by going into this agreement?
Well, as far as, I think the biggest benefit will be for our firemen that are in the paramedics that are there. It gives them an opportunity to oversee another guy and kind of teach, and I think there's a lot to be learned with teaching. It also puts out there, just in general, more paramedics into the field, and it gives us a kind of a feel of what's coming out there. As far as a true benefit that we'll see immediately, there's probably not a lot. It's just, I think it's best for the community and best for the organization overall.
Electric hand in a rig in a crisis doesn't hurt, right?
Yeah, electric hands is nice to have.
Because it just gets going, starting out, going through the paramedic program?
Yeah, currently, we have, one of our employees is enrolled in this program. He will not be able to obtain time with us. That's kind of a, it goes back to, he can't be compensated for being on a rig like that, but it will help people in that class. I believe this is a three, currently what it'll carry out to is a three-year agreement with this, and currently, it's only set up for this program, but we'll see what the next year's bring.
How many hours does a clinical student have to put in a rig to be certified?
It's been changing each year. Yeah, it ain't quite that high, but it's, I know they were, I think we're around the, I want to say four to, four to 500 hours.
Hundreds of hours.
There's a couple hundred hours, several hundred hours of it, and they do that in ERs, in ambulances, different organizations, different departments.
I do have a question. How many hours do you think your department will spend in training them?
Well, they usually come onto a 12-hour shift. That's usually the max. We'll probably be limited to taking, we would never take more than one on a shift, so, and depending upon how the guys receive taking on a student, so not everybody's going to want to be a teacher or a proctor, I guess is the way to say it, so I would envision we might have two to four students that come in over the course of this program during this year.
Okay, so several times, so they...
It could, yeah, it could be up to several, it could be up to a couple times, yeah, throughout the, between now and the program ends October of '22.
Okay, sounds like a good deal. No more questions or comments? Heather, will you please take?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a temporary activity permit for the North Channel Brewery. North Channel Brewery is requesting a temporary activity permit to allow for additional outdoor seating capacity on city sidewalks. Temporary activity permits must be approved via city council. This permit would allow for them to continue operations and provide safe distance outdoor dining experience. The North Channel Brewery is requesting the temporary activity permit from November 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022, at which point they would be allowed to operate under the GP 47 commercial uses within the city right-of-way permit. Temporary activity permits are allowable via the zoning ordinance Section 522 and Section 507. At this time, council could take action to approve the temporary activity permit for the North Channel Brewery with the recommended stipulations from the DDA and City Planning Department. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Is that already the tables and heaters we have outside already?
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
I'm here with the North Channel Brewery.
Oh.
Dave Kamalowski, so yeah, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
That's already included, the tables and...
We already, yeah, we had, yeah, some are basically just continuing. We're not adding anything, just continuing through the winter.
You tried that last year and you didn't?
I don't think we did it last year.
Okay.
Last year, we took it down, but a lot of that has to go to storage, of course, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have a question? All right, thank you.
Tents over there, too?
I was just gonna keep it warm enough.
Are you putting tents over there?
No, no, no umbrellas, no tents. The only thing we will have, which we currently have, is heaters.
The heaters.
Yeah, four heaters.
Okay.
Not handing out.
Thank you. Heather, you want to take the roll call?
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we have notices, communications, and announcements. A report from Planning and Zoning Department and the Planning Commission, a regular part of each council, cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Mike Sacola, is he here? No?
No.
Will report on the activities of the Planning and Zoning Department and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. At this time, Mr. Mark Whitlow will report on the activities of the Planning Commission and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to council, and congratulations to the newly re-elected council members. My name is Mark Whitliff, Zach Somsos, and I'm the planning commission chair, so we can start this up.
We decided this year, because we work so closely, we're just going to do this together and save everyone time. I hope you guys kind of know already, I'm all about efficiency, so a few more slides together in one longer one seem more efficient than doing two drawn out.
So what does the planning commission do? Planning Commission prepares and adopts physical plans for the city and reviews development proposals, both private and public, as set forth in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MCL 125.3101, and Michigan Planning Enabling Act, MCL 125.3801, so. Planning Commission members, Pam Weiner, Marlene McBride, our newest, Shelley Roberto, Roger Yoder, our resident senior commissioner, Michael Shemansky, vice chair, Bob Slavinsky, and myself.
So the planning department, what we do is we prepare and adapt various permits, we look at lot splits, we interact a lot with the developers, stakeholders. We kind of are the first step before it gets to the planning commission to make sure everybody's on the right path. That's the five-second version, too, so if you guys have questions during this, by all means, we'll just take them as they come. When we get into the special use permits, I'm sure there will be questions, so feel free to, we can do them as we go. So this is, these are the planning department priorities, but really, these are also the planning commission priorities as well as adhering to the master plan. That's our top priority, you know, we really need to focus on that. Issuing permits, we work with developers and ensure that they meet the city zoning ordinance requirements, and then researching ideas. We, you know, I do a lot of reading of what other communities are doing. I know the planning commission does that as well, and see how they, how they're attacking problems and how we get ahead of problems is really my end goal, and I'm sure that's, I don't want to speak for Mark, but...
No, that's what, that's what we do. We spend, as Mike Shemansky knows, we spend countless hours researching our meetings. For one, we had two meetings that lasted 10, over 10 hours, and we all know what that was about. We went through a variation of in-person and Zoom meetings such as council has done, and now we're back into face-to-face meetings.
I have a question, going back to the last one. Researching new ideas and practices to make Manistee vibrant while also preserving its character. When you, you know, I sat through a three-day housing summit, and one of the examples that they used was a 30-unit, 30 single homes that they built in Grand Haven, and it started with a change in zoning. That's Robinson Landing. Have you looked at that at all? It was kind of an interesting case. It was, it's built on 7.58 acres.
With a higher density and smaller lot size?
Yep.
Yeah, and those are ideas that would be congruent with areas like our 3rd district, where it already calls for higher density. The issue with the city is that we're pretty well-built up.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we're looking for any of the, any vacant land to do something like that, our options are suddenly very smaller. Then it becomes a redevelopment issue, so are we willing to buy, you know, are we or the developer willing to buy lots and create something like that out of what we already have?
I just wanted to make sure that...
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So next, we have text amendments, so I'm sure you guys are familiar, I've brought a handful of text amendments to you, get prepared for more, because as the season's slowing down, that's kind of what I'm shifting my focus on. During the development season, it's hard for me to find time to really get these, so I have a list on my wall that just keeps getting longer every day, but it helps to clear things up in the zoning ordinance, essentially, is really what I'm aiming at there. On the list there, there's the zoning amendments that we've made, or the text amendments we've made. This year, with the one highlighted in yellow, is the one that you guys just passed with your consent agenda, so thank you for not only making my life easier, but that one especially really helps protect the citizens as well, so I'm excited to see that go through.
Thank you.
No, this is Mark's favorite one. Okay, so this is the bylaw amendment. A big reason why the, some of those meetings were taking so long was that we had so many letters to read during them, and bylaws, we weren't really, we were kind of required to read those in the meeting, and as soon as it was an appropriate time to do that, we decided, well, let's change that similar to city council does, and we can still read them before the meeting, but we don't have to read them in the meeting and drag things out any longer than they have to be. So that was a big one that we did this year that I know made a lot of people happy.
Seven people happy.
Seven, at least seven people. So the lot line adjustment form, so this one, this is one you guys are familiar with as well, I think I brought that in last month. This one is another one that really helps protect the citizens, it helps, you know, helps the city track, okay, where is that property line at? If two neighbors are, you know, selling 10 feet, you know, it could be bringing somebody out of compliance, it could be taking somebody, their lot of record out of, no longer available, so they might not have a buildable lot in that case. So it really helps protect the citizens as much as it helps us keep track of things, too, so that was a, I was very glad to see that form go through. As far as enforcement, I work with Chief Glass in the police department, you know, working on these, I send out letters, I go, I go when I see these complaint, when complaints come in, and when I see them in the field, if I'm doing final inspections on decks and things like that, to make sure everybody adheres to their site plan, and, you know, on my way that to or from, I will oftentimes see violations, and that's kind of how we have to attack it. I can't be in the field at all times. Josh's officers have a lot of other things to do, so we're kind of, as we see them, we approach, you know, we attack them, and, you know, as we get complaints, we attack them, so.
You see a lot of them? I mean, just an average, give us an average of what you see, say, in a month's time? I don't know if you're going out every month and looking at...
Every time I go out, I can see one.
Really?
Pretty close. Pretty close. Some are, some are more egregious than others, but, you know, they're all the same in my eyes, and, you know, I'm not out, I don't want to write, I don't want Josh to have to write anybody a ticket, I don't want to have to get involved in that, you know, it's, the end goal is just what can we do to keep everybody playing by the same rules?
Thank you.
So we've worked a lot with the ready redevelopment community, we're, the city of Manistee is RRC certified, so the planning department here, we've done a lot of work to help maintain that, and that really gives us an edge for, over other communities, when developers are coming in and they want to redevelop, you know, different properties, or if they want to develop, seeing, a developer seeing that stamp and knowing, like, oh, they're already ready to go, they have all their i's dotted, their t's are crossed, that's attractive to a developer, so we work hard, and there's a lot of other players involved in that, but that's something that, you know, we continually, continuously are trying to work to maintain that. So here's a list of the permits issued here. I've also, I've got a hard copy list, and I'll send these out to you guys as email later, but these are the permits that have been issued this year, 2021. That's everything from, you know, land use permits as far as residential, commercial, there's HTC permits, there's signs, you name it, planned unit development, special use permits, they're all in there, I don't have to list them off for you, there's a lot, so I think we counted 58.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight so far this year. I've got four sitting on my desk that'll get through in the next week or so. Three, two or three of those are special use permits, so always busy. And then, now we'll just kind of go through the special use permits, those are kind of the highlights, really, of what's going on in the city, that's what people really notice, so Mark and I'll just kind of go through those, and if you guys have any questions or want an update on them, please ask.
So the first one, 170 Golshewski Drive, the marijuana grow facility.
In January.
January, yes. The River and Water Street Developments, which I believe are still on, aren't they?
The permit is passed, and I believe they couldn't get Mich to fund in, funding, or they were still waiting on the next round. I don't think they could quite get the points they needed to get the funding to make that project hit the finish line.
I think that's true.
And the old iron works 354 River Street, transfer the marijuana facilities.
So that was just, it was the same owner, he had a new LLC with, you know, he, from what he said, bigger investors, so it was just transferring the property name to new LLC members.
And the last, one that was current, Lake Wind Apartments, Golshewski in Washington Street.
This is one that didn't, didn't make it to the end. When they, when they knew they couldn't get their financing, there was no reason for them to continue with the, trying to get that permit there.
And another marijuana retailer, Authentic 231.
Yep, they were a retailer, they asked to have a grow up in the top, it was a former storage units up there, so they're revamping that to have a growing facility on site as well.
And another one in the marijuana district, 24 Arthur Street, the old Jarka Warehouse, just a transfer. Huntington Bank signage, which was just last month.
Yeah, they had some issues with combining parcel, and they wanted to expand their signage and things like that, it was enough to trigger a special use permit for that property there.
Cabernet that we've tackled a few times, we've extended their special use permit three times. Three times now, and they're going to be going forward with their parking lot, which is a good thing for that church.
Which this was a, this was a totally new permit, this wasn't an extension, this was a whole new permit, they had slightly different design for this one as well.
And one we know about, Lake Shore Motel, this was the many hours of research and meetings, put this through in, I believe, April, wasn't it?
March.
March, April.
March, April.
314 River Street, or 7th, excuse me, planned unit development in the old Ringo Oil Building. Don't know where that stands, but that was another one that we worked on.
It's come through, there's been some redesigns and gone back to the drawing board a few times there, but it's still, it's still active. It's still active, but not permitted, I should say.
Challenging with parking was one of the, one of the challenges there.
So this is the one we're going to see tomorrow, 155 8th Street, there's going to be, they're requesting multi-unit dwelling, four units there, I believe is a former restaurant.
Former restaurant, VFW building, so we'll tackle that tomorrow night.
Is that, is that the look that they're going to have for it?
That's, that's the rough rendering, yes.
Okay.
And this is the other one there, and this is, they recently had a lot split next to the Super 8 Motel. It's a continued use, but because the building was there, was not separated, they needed to have their own special use permit, and that's going to be a contractor facility. I assume he's been storing contractor gear there previously, but this just brings him into compliance.
And working together in the future through the Downtown Development Authority Historic District Commission and Manistee County Visitors Bureau, so.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't say this is a, by no means an all-encompassing list, but this is just an idea of, you know, working together, that's what the idea for the whole community is, everybody think, you know, working together can only be better for everyone, so. Again, if there's any questions?
Does school still talk about taking down Jefferson School and putting housing in there, is that something I assume you'll get involved in, if that's the case?
If it gets to that point, I haven't, there's no application that I've received, and...
That was part of their big pitch, so with the buy proposals, I recall.
Yep.
They're still going to take down the old school in another year or two?
That I'm not aware of.
That's the plan, I believe, so.
It'll probably be longer than a year or two, because they have to have everything built, because they have to be able to have a place to have all the students, so everything else will have to be built before they do the demo, that's the last, although the first demo is going to be the high school. That's the number one. That's when we'll know that there's actually progress, and that building comes down.
Anybody else? Is the guy still standing here?
So, so Zach, since you're the, you're the new guy, basically, on the team, and you've got experience from other places, so what's your, do you have any recommendations or suggestions to city council on things that we could do from our position here to support development here in Manistee?
To support development? I guess, I guess the number one thing in, you know, I can't be at every meeting, I'm as many, at as many as I can be, attend different kinds of meetings, and Linda, I know you do for sure, I, you, everyone else might as well, I don't know, but I think it's important to see different aspects. The other suggestion that I know in Genesee County, we saw a lot of, was, that's where it was before, it's, county's a little bit different than city, but I think the sentiment there is valid, is seeing what staff members day-to-day is like, because that gives you an idea, okay, well, how can I, how can I help support them, because if I can support them, I can support the end goal of, in this case, development, so. Just visiting and just bumping elbows all over, which I know we all do a little bit, but you can never do too much, I think.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would, I'd like to invite all the council members to our planning commission meetings there. You'll get a lot of education, be up to date on what's going on, and get a little bump before it comes to council, so. First Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
There's one tomorrow night?
I know we'll see at least one there tomorrow.
Maybe two.
Maybe two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think you're next.
Okay.
Presentation of a resolution of thanks and appreciation in honor of Dwayne Edgar Dewey. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem Mick Shemansky, who will present a resolution of thanks and appreciation in honor of his friend, Dwayne Edgar Dewey.
So as you know, Mr. Dewey just passed away, and the veterans in Manistee are going to be honoring him at Veterans Day. It will be at 11 o'clock in the morning on the 11th of November at Veterans Memorial Park, so the resolution of thanks and appreciation, whereas Dwayne Edgar Dewey was an inspiration, friend, and... friend and advocate for veterans in Michigan and supported Manistee veterans with numerous fundraising events to include the Veterans Memorial Park. Whereas while serving on the front lines of the Korean War with Easy Company, 2nd Battalion, 5th Marines, 1st Marine Division, Camp Pendleton, California, Dwayne risked his life for his fellow corpsmen. On April 16th, 1952, Corporal Dewey, although wounded by an enemy grenade, smothered another exploding grenade with his body to save the life of a corpsman and other Marines around him. Whereas Dwayne, for his hero, hero, heroic actions, received the United States Military's Highest Declaration for Valor, the Congressional Medal of Honor. Whereas President Dwight Eisenhower referred to Dewey as having the body of steel when awarding him his Medal of Honor. Whereas Dwayne Edgar Dewey, father, grandfather, great father, passed away on October 11th, 2021, resolved that on behalf of the Manistee City Council and the citizens of the community, we give thanks and appreciation in honor of Dwayne Edgar Dewey for his courage, selfless service to his country. Further saith not this resolution.
Well, thank you. Um, I would be happy and feel really comfortable. And I think everybody on council will feel really comfortable, I hope. I'm sure they will, if you read that at the ceremony.
Be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you for writing it up. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance may be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens' comments? I don't hear any. So hearing none, we will move on to officials and staff, starting with Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items. Um, at a study session, we talked about the Furcano land sale. I spoke with Ted. Council member Sullivan mentioned, is he going to be ready to do the deck this next summer? I spoke with him. They're working on the interior more and he agreed to kind of delay the purchase and then the expansion of the deck till next summer, which will help with our grant application. Still intend to move forward with what we need to do for this conversion. But, um, I think the first step, it feels like they're going to work on the interior, work on the building. I think today they had a crane taken off the old HVAC from the roof. And then next summer, well, using, utilizing the deck they have. And then next summer, expanding and completing the purchase probably around this time next year.
Sarah, I have a question. Is there a reason why we're waiting till next summer? Like, I don't know why you can't, why we can't rewrite the purchase agreement and just put that contingency in there.
We could put it in for next summer. Yeah, I think I was talking with the attorney about it. So either way, it would work. So if council would like to see that back on the agenda and extending it for a year till December 31st, 2022, we can do that.
I, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay. We'll bring that to a future council meeting.
Is it going to take that long to figure out if the, the boat launch is acceptable?
I don't think so. I did ask how long it would take. I asked the DNR. They just said it had to go to the, um, National Park Service for their initial approval. I did ask the timeframe. I was not given the timeframe, so I don't know. So there's this unknown about how long it'll take, but I think that we'll pursue kind of making sure we have our ducks in a row to make that land replacement. And then, but in the meantime too, knowing that he'll delay that, we, we will have, um, we will be penalized for our North River Walk grant application. I think that's probably the safest bet to go. And we appreciate Mr. Furcano working with us on that. I told him we're very excited when that restaurant opens. He's, he's moving. If anyone's been by there, there's a lot of work going on. Another item, we did receive the traffic studies. I should provide it. I'm sorry. So we, we've been looking at that. We did an initial review. There are some, some quick things we can do in terms of sign placement. Some other little items, but they did find some more issues over at Elm Street, which we didn't see initially, but that's where some crossings happen. We're also looking at some other improvements at 12th Street. So I'll be sending that out to council. We'll also be meeting with the school about that as well. Um, the other item is, um, we had an action level exceedance in our recent lead and copper tests. There's a couple of things that happened after that. There's a notification and there's also public education. And having gotten through this at another community, you do 20 tests, you know, if three come back high for whatever reason, you do have that 90th percentile. That 90th percentile is above that 15 parts per billion action level. Certain things come into play where, uh, we just had meetings yesterday and today about what has to happen. We have to submit a public, um, notice to all, all the water, um, users in the city. So we'll be sending that out within three days. So that's going to go out by Monday. So I just want to council be aware, I'll be sending more updates on that. But in the last community I worked in where we did this, we created a webpage, we did, uh, FAQs for people concerned. I will say that I think first meeting Jeff McCula, they're very proud and they should be about all the service lines that have been replaced here. Um, I can't, the other community I worked in, there were a lot of lead service lines. So I just will say that, but there are a lot of unknowns about each house, about lead sources. So it's, it's going to be a lot of public education about faucets after 1988 have lead in them or made before 1988. So there's things like that which we'll be putting on. So people who are concerned about this will have information available. So I just want to council be aware of that. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Oh, I'm sorry. For the traffic, um, study, did they study the US 31 and 12th Street at all? Putting in a light or anything?
I don't recall if that was part of it. It was the-
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
So we didn't look specifically at that because of, it's M dot. That isn't controlled, the, you know, that, that area. And, um, so we, we kept that separate because of our schedule to get this done. We'll have to, we can look into coordinating that. I will say, you know, to get a warrant for, you know, a light there, it takes, um, a lot of pedestrian traffic. And I would, my guess is we won't have it, but we could do some quick counts there and watch the intersection just to verify. It wouldn't take much to do that. We can work with Jeff on that, um, to look at it. So.
I'll add to that. When the grocery store was being built, there was a warrant study that was performed at that intersection. And it did not meet the warrants to place a traffic light there. The developer then came back after the store was built because they were using projected traffic. They came back after the store was built and redid the study with the post-construction. And it still did not, did not meet the warrants for a traffic signal.
But that was before the high school became a middle school, right?
That's true.
So there could be more.
What do we need? A lot more accidents? Somebody die there first before they'll do something?
Um, actually, I mean, not joking around. That is part of the warrants. Um, severity of crashes, uh, volume of crashes.
That's what it took up at the 31 and Murphy Road.
Every day I go to that corner to make a left and I can tell you how many kids that almost get hit. So I think we need to do a study again.
We can bring it up to M dot.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Taylor?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Heather Howe was the election. I'm sure you want to talk about it.
The election went very well. It was certified today. The Board of Canvassers did certify the election today. So, um, yeah, everything went great.
Good to hear. Um, let's see. Ed Bradford?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Jeff McCula?
Just one quick item. We've got a, a road closure on Washington Street. Probably some of you have seen that. The contractor's planning to put the base, uh, layer of pavement down tomorrow and then turn around and do the final, uh, layer of pavement Friday. So that should remove the traffic control on US 31 and then also that closure at Washington Street. So that's progressing.
Are there going to be, um, curbs and sidewalks as well on the, on the street?
There are curbs at the intersection. And there is sidewalk planned on Jackson Street on the north side. And then just kind of some spot fills and, um, but the, the big section that doesn't exist now is on the north side between Jefferson and a little bit east of Jefferson and, and Washington.
So there will be at least one continuous sidewalk on one side or the other of that street?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I, cause you can't really tell under the construction piece.
There, there's some concrete work that can still happen. So usually they try to get all the drive approaches, all the concrete work done, then pave it. But there's about two weeks left in the paving window. So they're trying to get the paving done and then we'll finish up those other items. Thank you.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Chief Glass?
Just a quick report. It was very quiet on the Capitol Hall.
The best. Did they ever tear down those houses, Josh, that we talked about? Did we ever do, tear down those houses? And one gentleman was going to tear down two houses.
So right now, there's two houses scheduled to be tore down in November. The homeowners has permits for them. One is on Davis Street and one does NCAP on, I believe, 7th Street, right by Morton's parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
So we have those. We have demolitions, but they're privately owned. So they're on schedule. We verified that they have, um, contacted a, a demo crew. And the house on Monroe, we mentioned earlier, there is a, a court order or judgment to either fix it up or tear it down. And if they don't fix it up, then we're going to probably move to, to get it tore down. So.
Is there a timeframe for that?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days from the date of the hearings. It's probably down to 35 days, maybe even now.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Chief Cameron, do you have anything?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Zach Samsel, do you have anything? Did I miss anybody? I don't think so. All right. Um, Mr. Backman?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Lundberg?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Monaya?
Yeah, I just want to thank, um, Jeff McCula for take, letting me tour the sewer expansion. It was really interesting. I think we all should go and take a look. I don't think we know how much is down there that, um, they're doing.
What did you tour? I'm sorry.
The, um, sewer expansion. Pretty cool. But, and then it was really good to see all the kids out trick or treating and it was good job downtown. So.
Mr. Kowalski?
Okay, I just want to thank everybody that voted for me. I beat Linda and, uh, also, we had about 300 kids at our house.
You had 300? How many did you say?
About 300.
Hope you had lots of candy.
I just wanted to, Mr. Manager, did you notice in the paper they had a House Bill 4281 that lets, uh, local government impose extra property taxes for police? Notice that one?
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up. So.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Mayor Potem Schamansky?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Huntington paper.
I want to thank everybody for, um, this successful, um, well, mostly the staff, um, and the elections committee for wanting a safe, um, successful election. And congratulations to Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Kowalski. I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. I, I know there's a lot of projects going on that are being worked on. I just want to thank staff again. You do, guys do a great job. Okay. With that, I'll take my last turn.
Make a motion.